I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska governing body. The city gives Seward advice by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of the recording process is posted in the meeting room. Participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presidents shall approach the podium, state the name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust to order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilkins, Dak, Geer, Camper, Holder, Singletary, Schmidt, Henderson.
Present.
Item number one, consideration of approval of draft minutes of July 2nd, 2019. Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Say no, please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Items two through six are the consent agenda items this evening. Motion is second. Is there any discussion? Say no, please register your votes. Item number seven is a public hearing for 7:00 PM, consideration of ordinance amended text, Article 32 supplemental development regulations in Article 4, use matrix of the city unified and hand development ordinance. Greg, did you want to take that?
Yes. This item was heard a few weeks back by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a text amendment to allow for, essentially when somebody applies for a special use permit, under our current ULDO, we're able through the special use process to waiver the height regulations. But when we look at widths or we look at setbacks, there was no ability to adjust those with the special use permit. And what we were looking at was a solution to take care of what we called the historical setback rule. So you have a building that requires a special use permit. It may have something already on the property. You're gonna hear one tonight that's gonna follow this rule should it pass. If it doesn't, then we're gonna drop it. But under historical setback rule, you could build on that property adjacent to it with a special use permit and build under the same line and keep it in line with the current building. Or you would look at buildings that were maybe in line with the current frontage of all the houses on your block, but rules have changed, so you would be set back 15 feet further than every other house on your block. We didn't have a historical setback rule or any way to do that under a special use permit. And so Ed, Jake, and I went and looked through some of the different zoning ordinances and came up with this recommendation. It's kind of led by Ed. The other element of it is it also adds a special use for facility maintenance facilities in an R4 and that relates to essentially kind of a specific, but as you'll see with our applicant in a later one, is the use of like a bus barn in an R4 as a maintenance facility. It's designed to maintain vehicles and do service work on and things like that. I think that was a non-conforming use and so to allow for a special use and to have it be authorized, we recommended making that a special use permit. So that's essentially what we've done. Again, the approval of any sort of setback adjustment rather than what we saw in some communities where it was administrative, where we could give somebody a leniency of like five feet if the right, you know, the chair of planning and zoning, city engineer, planning and zoning director, mayor, administrator signed off on it and said, "We'll give you a waiver of five feet." We felt it more appropriate for planning and zoning in the council to approve those through the special use process since that's what we had for height restriction adjustments and waivers. So we tried to mirror that rather than putting on the administration, we would put it back with this body.
Any questions?
So what are they wanting to do with them?
Uh, I mean, we're gonna get into it's the next agenda item. But essentially, for example, what the school district's asking is they have the current bus barn. The design of the new addition to that building, they can't get the turn radius they need correctly within their current lot unless that new addition is lined up on the back, the north side of the building with the current existing buildings, which are essentially about a foot off the property line. There's nobody back there. There's literally a forest behind it, but due to the nature of their legal lot lines, you have to be, I think, 10 feet off. And that 10 feet just pushes it out so that the radius doesn't work and it wouldn't be a functional building. They couldn't utilize it. So we tried to look at different avenues to try and accommodate that and also look at our issue with historic setback issues. And so we felt like this was a mirrored, something we already do with height and again, put the power in the hands of planning and zoning for recommendation, then ultimately the city council rather than the administration.
This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on item number seven? See, no one put their heads down. I'll say no. So I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number seven. Any other questions or comments from the council? Carl?
So with this, I mean, the case that brought this forward is an existing structure on the property. Why are we expanding that to encompass more than just inclusive to existing buildings through their existing lines at this point?
Because we wanted to mirror the current height one, which is for any special use. You can have a blank piece of property and then build something on it that requires a special use and adjusts the height now. And so we felt that if planning and zoning and the city council had the authority to determine whether something like that is appropriate, we felt it would be appropriate to look at making adjustments to setback in specific instances. So that was our reasoning for it versus going super narrow and then it's essentially just special legislation for one instance. But I see what you mean in regards to doing just for additions or current structures.
Right. I mean, and that's one of the things I looked at and this is just on work on my own house was, it was built before the code was applicable into the zoning, so my setbacks were different than what they should have been. And so adding on, if I were to add on, it would make sense to extend the existing building, otherwise it would look weird. But I don't want to get caught into the area of if I'm going to build something that's now zoned and say, "Oh, my neighbors, they were built before it was zoned and now it's zoned differently." I want the same frontage of the lot that they have. I want, you know, that, to me is a completely different situation than extending an existing building. So it's not like I could say, "I want to extend mine since I'm violation of a side setback, I want to violate the alley setback as well as a special use permit."
The way this is designed, if you read it again, it's context interpretation. You actually have to be applying for a special use permit. So again, note the change in the matrix. Maintenance facility requires a special use permit and as part of that process then you can request waivers. But just for a general permitted use, you would not be able to request that because there's no public hearing. If we want to expand to that, that's another step beyond this. This is limited to only special uses as special consideration as part of their application for the special use permit.
Right, but there's no defined terms of corralling that special use. They could say, "I want a special use for this and it's applicable under that." So if they wanted to, instead of the side setback, then go into the frontage setback, it would fall under the special use as well?
If they're getting a special use permit for their use, yes. That's how we've interpreted the height exception one as well. This mirrors, the language is verbatim. And so you have to be applying for a special use in the first place. The actual use on the property, what you're doing.
I mean, for me, I just don't like the variance on how brought that scope is. Like if it was understandable to existing structures, extensions or something like that. But I think once you, I don't, I don't like that it can encompass more than an existing structure's non-conformity to the zoning.
Okay. Let's ensure this is done here.
So Greg, if, if we didn't do this, would, for instance, the school district, under the way it's currently written and everything, could they still build that addition in line with their current? They could not.
No.
Because this has been some years ago. I was thinking of extending my garage and I'm in the old neighborhood, or I'm not anymore, but I was, where our side yard was only like three feet. And I was told by then building inspector that if I had it onto the garage, I had to stay, I could, I could build, just extend it backwards and stay right on line with the current setback, which was not in conformity with current, but back in the day, it was three feet, it was fine.
I think part of it relates to conforming uses. The bus barn had been there for a really long time. And so I think part of it is that non-expansion of a non-conforming use.
So since my garage, if it's a conforming use, it could have just kept going?
Yeah, because, and I'm not saying that's what it was and again, these rules have changed many times over since, you know, every year we changed them. But the rule for this, this specific one, me and Ed and Jake all looked at it and we tried and tried and tried to find it because we didn't want to have to go change anything. We wanted it to work and we could not find our way through the weeds on that. And so we tried to look for a solution that we felt was amenable, but also matched things that we currently do that kind of echoes current standards and language that we have in the code already. And that's what Ed found. Ed found this for height, so.
So if, if they, if they currently couldn't do it the way it's written, they, the way they could do it, if we didn't do this, is apply for a variance or?
They could. I would strongly, and I'll leave it to Kelly. It probably does not meet the standard of a variance. It does, a variance is dictated by state statute. Every criteria is a state statute. It has nothing to do with ULDO. We just mirror state statute. And you have to show a really specific hardship.
So my question then is on ones that we've done in prior years and somebody comes back to us and saying, "Well, if we allowed this, what are we gonna do to that individual that wants the same right that we approved years ago?"
That's, all I can tell you is if you approve an exception, you need to state on the record while you're doing it and give specific facts. Again, in the case of, for instance, the school district, there's no adjacent property owner adjacent to the area that it's at. The current building was within the guidelines. The building was, existed for, since probably before the zoning code existed, the initial building, not the current one. There's a public need for it and good. It is for the general public of the city. And you're just setting facts, I mean, that's the reason if you're gonna make exceptions or do things like that, you need to set a factual basis in the record of why you're doing it and then make your decision so then you can come back and, and say, "You want it because you just, you know, want to do it and, you know, it saves you five bucks." Well, this other one, they physically can't put it there then. It is not a functioning, and that's the only way you can do it. You have to set the factual basis for why you make the determination and I think Kelly can speak to that as well.
Otherwise, the next time you say no, you have a problem. Right. Because they're gonna ask, well, you have to give the reasons why now this one doesn't meet that same one. Otherwise, they'll go back and they'll say, "Well, what's the difference?" And so that usually ends up litigation if your knife is unhandled right. Is that fair?
I wouldn't grant these willy-nilly. I mean, I would really put some thought and effort into it and set the basis for it. At least make sure the record states why you did it.
And basically what we're creating is an exception and the exception should never swallow the rule. So it should be done sparingly and when necessary. And I don't think we'd expect this to be done very often, but.
Except tonight.
Except when it does, which is why we're bringing it at the same time because it's not like we anticipated something like this, but that's the reason for that.
And then that applies for like signs and other items as well?
Only the setback.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we want the widths to match the current language for the heights. I'm just throwing that up.
Sure.
And this is only for an R4 or this is for anything?
Anything. Anything that requires a special use permit. If it requires a special use permit as part of your request, right now you could request a height adjustment as part of your special use permit. This would allow you to ask for a setback adjustment.
Is special use being anything not allowed in that zoning?
But allowed by special use because there's the stuff that's just not allowed.
Right, exactly.
So anything that requires a special use permit, this can be one of the items that you can consider. And I think if it, if it does become a problem, the other solution is, and I'm not trying to anticipate what you'll do on the application that you'll have before you next, is if it is deemed a problem, this will give us some more time to fix it up, allow this use and then go find a different solution. If we're not fully comfortable with this one, allow it to go through and then we'll go clean some other stuff up and re-change this again in the future. We can do that as well. This was the solution the administration came up with to try and get, get this project taken care of without just making straight special legislation, which is not appropriate.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
In ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, Chapter 410, zoning and subdivision, Article 32 supplemental development regulations, to allow for exceptions to setback requirements upon approval of a conditional use permit. And Article 4 use matrix to allow a civic facility maintenance use in an R4 district under a conditional use permit to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to provide for an effective date, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and designated as ordinance number 2019-21. Since the titles here might approve, I needed motion to suspend this statutory rule. Is there, just leave a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes. Please spread the votes.
When you have a walking back, Cameron, Noah, Singletary, Schmidt, opposed, Henderson.
Again, this is, this is ordinance number 2019-21. We would like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted. Is that right?
Who for approval?
Site.
Your motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Again, the question is your ordinance number 2019-21 be filed and passed and adopted. Please register your vote. Please spread the votes.
When you have a walking back, Cameron, Noah, Singletary, Schmidt, Henderson.
Item number eight, this is also a public hearing, 7:00 PM. Consideration of a special use permit for 712 South Columbia Avenue for an adjustment to the building setback requirement to operate a maintenance facility in R4 district. Greg?
This is essentially a special use permit application under the current ordinance you just passed. This item is the school district's bus barn. According to Tom at the school district, they think the bus barn was built in approximately 1960 or in that, so predating a lot of our zoning ordinances and codes. They are looking to expand the bus barn, I believe, for the new bus, is what they're gonna house in it for the foreseeable future. And so the setback currently is one, the current building in the bus barn is one to two feet off of the northern property line and adjacent to the northern properties. I think there are apartment buildings to the north. And then this is gonna be built at the furthest east end of the current bus barn. And at that point, it is actually adjacent to non-buildable property, essentially floodway property that is a forest. The school even made contact with the property owners and I believe they somehow acquired the property through USDA grant that will not allow them to sell it in a very easy manner because they did investigate that. Because they thought, "Well, we'll just buy 10 feet and then our setback will be 10 feet and we'll be fine." But that option was not available to them and thus we got into the ordinance that we just previously passed. Again, their design is to build it within the exact current setback line of the current building on the northern edge. Without this, they are unable to make their turn radiuses on the south side of the building to accommodate this bus barn. And so there is a public need. The other options that were explored by the school district was looking to build a whole new bus barn off-site because there's nowhere else on this facility to fit this. And so that, you know, as government bodies know, that entails a lot of questioning and answering. I think their board felt that this was where they want to be long-term rather than exploring other options for a new entire bus barn facility. And so they'd like to remain here. I can try and answer anything anymore. We included a copy of the ULDO or the comp plan. Does show it as, I believe, around a high-density residential with some civic use, I think, below it. So not entirely out of the context of our comp plan.
So this is item number eight. It's a public hearing. We have a public comment. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Saying no, I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number eight. Does the council have any questions or comments?
You know, I know nobody's from the city, our school district is here, but I'm, I'm just looking at the layout they have here and I was trying to figure out where this turn radius refers. Because based off where they're adding the, the 10 feet, it looks like, whatever they're adding to the backside of this bus barn, it looks like, or east side it would be. Where are they bringing in this turn radius?
To the south. The bus barn for this particular bay is longer than the current one on the front, on the southern side. I don't know that, I don't think Ed included the design for it, but it's a bay that sits on the eastern end of the building and it is longer because that bus that they'll store in is not your standard school bus. Yep. And so that's where it will be housed. And so the turn radius to get in the size of this facility is just larger than the current bus barn on the southern side. And so then that shortens that turn radius more for them to try and get it squared around and broader.
Any other questions or comments?
No utility issues or rider issues?
Nope. Planning and zoning recommended approval last night unanimously.
So it's just straight motion for approval?
Yeah.
I saw move.
The motion is here second, please. Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Saying no, please register your votes. Okay, please spread the votes.
When you have a walking back, Cameron, Noah, Singletary, Schmidt, opposed, Henderson.
Item number nine is also a public hearing. Cerration ordinance approving the final plat of Plex subdivision planning and development. Is there mention of Greg Butcher?
Yes. As we mentioned when we were working through the TIF process for Plex Homes, that in order to phase the four phases of the TIF project, as Andrew Willis discussed, the building ultimately, when it's finished, will look like two buildings, two apartment complexes, but they'll be built tentatively in four phases. So one building will be built and then directly adjacent to it to the north of the first building, right against it, will be, the next building will be built. Since they're being built as separate buildings at different times, they need and will be taxed and looked at for their phasing of TIF. Under normal circumstances with those legal lot lines, you need to have a five-foot setback in R4. So by building it under the PUD, this allows us to eliminate the setback between those two units when they're built and have a zero setback. And so that is the request for the side yard setback to be to zero. There's also a request to reduce the 15-foot setback on the landscaping to 10 feet. I think the applicant is here to better explain it, but I always explained it planning and zoning last night as well. It's due to a parking issue in a way that they actually, he flip-flopped the entire building to face a different direction for aesthetic purposes to improve the view from the roadway. But the applicant can speak to that. Heard by planning and zoning last night at public hearing. We did have some discussions about just parking in general, but nothing specific was changed in regards to recommendation, the PUD. Just a notation of concern that parking will be an issue. We reminded them about Concordia giving parking passes to students as part of their cost of tuition. And so if there's an overflow, there's a parking lot right across the street. So our hope is that they'll be able to utilize that if they're students, so. And then I think there were other utility issues that weren't specific at all to the PUD that we talked about, so.
So this is a public hearing and we'll be public comment on this item. So we'll go with the public comment portion and then from the public wish to comment on item number nine. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Thomas Kaden, 11-19, Midgaster Drive. Yeah, so we kind of went over the, what we were doing for the lot lines when we were doing the TIF application as far as building in four phases to, basically build the buildings right next to each other. But in order to do so, like Greg said, we have to request for a zero lot line, which is why we're applying for this PUD. And then, okay, so this is how the site plan currently sits. So you can see you have two entrances. You have one off Lincoln, on Lincoln Street and one on North Columbia, up at the north part there. And so we originally, to abide by having 15-foot landscaping requirement, we had the parking that you see on the east side. It was flip-flopped on the west side. Do you want to show that? Or that other one I sent you? Yeah, yeah. So you can see that that was originally how it was. But we felt like, so the front of the building would have been facing west then, so the backside of the building would have been facing North Columbia. And so we felt like it would, uh, would be more appealing, I guess, to have the front of the building facing North Columbia because that's, I mean, there's, there's a winged coat of stone around the whole building, but with the front doors, it does have a nice stone front to it and so. But in order to do that, because we would have to have six-foot sidewalks on both sides now because you have to have handicap parking on the front. And so that is why we're requesting a five-foot, or taking off the five foot so we can put that parking front, which would allow us to have the apartment building, the front of it facing North Columbia. We were, because, you know, there's only 10 foot of green space. We thought as a compromise, we would throw in some trees there, as you can see there on North Columbia, which the other benefit of doing this, it this way is the apartment is setback a little bit further as well compared to just the standard 25-foot setback. So with that, I'll take any questions you guys might have.
Thanks. So are there any questions?
Yes, Alan.
How short of parking will you be?
Alan, what's that?
How short of parking will you be?
We're not short parking. Nope. We're, uh, we're abiding by the city code and I think what Greg was talking about or what planning and zoning brought up was, you know, obviously the, the fear, the fear is, you know, college students, so everyone's gonna have a car compared to maybe traditional multi-family where you have parents and a child, where not, everyone has a car. But I guess to kind of ease that a little bit is there, every Concordia student, if it is primarily college students, there is parking right across the street, which everyone does have a permit for.
That's really useful thinking. That lot, Jesse's lot, is just.
Well, I, I mean, there's, there's parking obviously further down. So I guess the point is, is I mean, if, if, once we do get, because we don't have any problems with that, I guess, until the fourth building's built. And at that point, if, if there's that much men where we're building the fourth building, then I mean, we can basically, because it will be a private law, we're not using TIF to, to build that parking lot. We can basically give out parking passes and say, "Well, you know, you have to park it in Concordia," so.
I mean, the concern last night from a resident that was here, obviously dealt with the parking on Columbia and on Lincoln Street and what that looks like at phase three or phase four. And with Lincoln Street being as narrow as it is, I mean, something the council's gonna have to address when, when that comes to fruition and you maybe receive removing parking on Lincoln, maybe turning that one block into one way or something. You're gonna have to wait and see how the traffic flow works coming out of the apartments.
Any other questions, yes, John?
Thomas, did you figure in emergency apparatus on Lincoln Street? Because that will be a biggest concern when you get outriggers out on thirty-one. Would we be able to do it with parking? That'd be something to think about in the future, measuring those outriggers, because that's, that would be key.
There's already parking on Lincoln.
Right, but.
So what are you, are you referring to the additional, like inside on the property?
Correct.
You're going to do like through the parking lot?
And then additional parking if they do park on it. Because when we did do the burn, we couldn't, we had to pick our spot because of the outriggers.
Sure.
So that's just something to keep in mind because of parking, you might not be able to.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a good point, I guess I haven't really, so, I mean, obviously our parking type kind of design is in it goes in front of the city or mar- marshal. So I'm sure it's considered.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments on item number nine?
Would it be worth considering only using the one on Columbia as an entrance? Just because of the sightlines with all the traffic that is moving on Columbia? That they exit out of the parking lot on Lincoln Street alone?
That's a fair point. Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's twenty-some parking stalls right there to the east side. And so obviously, because they're, they would have to. So I think that would be a fairly natural flow. But as far as, you know, yeah, I mean, that's definitely something we could.
I know there's a lot of traffic that parks along that side of the road. So I think that's the only side you can park on, so.
It's true. Yeah.
Any other question or comments? I'll let everybody start with this. Before we do that, yeah, the public comment, is, is anyone else wish to comment on this? Now close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And we introduce the ordinance. An ordinance, in order to approve the plat entitled Plex Subdivision Plan Unit Development, City of Stewart, Stewart County, Nebraska, as herein after, set forth located at the northwest corner of Lincoln Street and North Columbia Avenue to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for an effective date hereof and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-two. The title is hereby approved, any motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Second.
A motion and a second is being further discussion. Seeing none, would you register your votes? Please pay the votes. On what's my place? Yeah. Right here. Again, this, again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-two. We don't like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read.
So.
Sorry. A motion and a second is being further discussion. Seeing none, the question is your ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-three be finally passed and adopted. If you'd register your vote, please sway the votes. Item number ten is also a public hearing for seven P M. Consideration in order amending the energy element to the comprehensive plan, Greg.
Yes. One of the elements that was required pursuant to state statute of comprehensive plans is a recent change that not a lot of people had caught on to, so we're continuing to work through it, is the requirement of an energy element to your comprehensive plan. And so we worked with RDG to come up with an energy element. We didn't have one previously ever in our codes, and so we brought that before you. Generally talks about energy usage, conservation, being proactive in regards to energy efficiency, using, you know, converting, it talks about converting streetlights to LED fixtures, which we've been doing a great job of, looking to do energy audits, continuing to try and work with like NPBD on our energy efficiency rebates and different programs like that to continue to incentivize and, and, and work towards energy efficiency and their, you know, elements to conserve energy. So we're just not going full bore on it. So I can answer any questions you have, required by state statute to be an element of our comprehensive plan.
Years ago, we used to, the city, any public or any residents that went all electricity, they got a kickback. Is there, is that something we're going to think about again in the future?
That would be up to this body to come up with, if that's the goal of the powers that be.
I was saying, we used to do it years and years ago, anybody had all electric, there was a kickback.
We'd have to look into that and see what that would have been, if I'm unaware.
And it'd probably be a rebate versus a kickback. But, and I think that, that a program like that would fall into conformity with the energy element that's proposed here. So just continuing to incentivize. Again, I think, I mean, going electric versus using, I guess, Black Hills, I mean, you could make the argument that natural gas is cheaper than some of the ways that you're developing electric energy right now. So I don't know if it would be perfect.
It was based on your efficiencies.
Yeah, efficiencies, I mean, obviously we want to push efficiencies, especially in the electric utility side, keep demand low and keep our peaks down, so. But, yeah. It'd be up to this body.
So item number ten is a public hearing, so we have a public comment. Open the public comment portion of the public hearing for item number ten, anyone from the public wishes a comment? Seeing no one, then I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number ten. Any other questions or comments from the council?
So this is just kind of use of a guideline towards energy efficiencies moving towards the future and different avenues. It's nothing specific or committal that we're.
It doesn't require anything, it's just a guideline, just like the comprehensive plan itself is a guideline. It's not hard and fast and you have to follow every single element of it. It's a guide that we try to hold ourselves to and continuing to develop and look at different things. It cites many state statutes though, the energy efficiency codes and things like that that are current in regards to the currently adopted. You know, we have the two thousand twelve National Energy Conservation Code, it's an adopted code by the city of Stewart. So it just cites those things and brings them to the forefront.
Any other questions or comments, or someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
The ordinance amended the comprehensive plan for the city of Stewart, Nebraska, in that area outside of, but within two miles of the corporate limits of the city of Stewart, Nebraska, to adopt an energy element as required by Nebraska state statute. To repeal all ordinances or portions of ordinances in conflict, herewith provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-three. And the title is hereby approved, any motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So.
Second.
A motion and a second is being further discussion. Seeing none, would you register your votes? Please sway the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-three. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read? Second, a motion and a second is being further discussion. Seeing none, the question is your ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-three be finally passed and adopted. If you'd register your vote, please sway the votes. All right, item eleven, also a public hearing for seven P M. Consideration of purchase of real estate from the Phil- from the estate of Phyllis Eggerter. Good.
I'll take this one. As we previously had done, as part of our rail campus development, we had exercised an option for the purchase of what we referred to as the Eggerter property located on Highway fifteen, south of current rail campus. At the time, then we exercised the option, unfortunately, as you may know, Phyllis Eggerter passed away. And so it went into an estate and we had to work our way through that process as well. And it kind of ground things to a halt, which is just the natural process of dealing with estates and things like that. And we weren't trying to be pushy. And so we wanted to go through, and you know, there's grieving and things involved, so we tried to be diligent of that. So what you have before you here tonight is the purchase agreement based on the option. It does have a few elements in it that I'll bring to your attention. It will allow us to be basically on the site doing grading work and preparation work for the entry road and some of the utility work we're going to do. So we'll go remove trees, fencing, other things. We will leave the structures though, and they'll have until the end of August to remove the structures and anything in them. And then after that, even after closing, we may close it, if it's approved by the body today, we may close it as early as this week. And then we will get started on that process. But they won't remove this, they have until August thirty-first to remove the structures, clean it out.
Any questions or comments? This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing. Public, which is a comment on this item, you may do so now. Seeing none from the public wishing to comment, I will close the public hearing portion of the public, public comment portion of the public hearing. It's comment, does the council have any questions or comments?
I'll introduce resolution.
So, okay, so item eleven A. Resolution has been introduced, it is designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty. Anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Move.
A motion and a second, to register your votes. Please sway the votes. And then for item eleven B, authorization of claim of the amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, one thousand payable to title services of Blue Valley LLC as earnest money deposit for purchase of said property would be made to be paid at closing. This requires a motion. Right. Do you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second, to register your votes? Please sway the votes. All right, item number twelve, consideration of ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Stewart, Greg.
This is an item that actually came up for public hearing a number, I think, a couple of months back. But there was not an official recommendation from planning and zoning. So we took public comment on it and then waited for planning and zoning to finalize their thoughts and feelings on it and then bring it back to you now. Ultimately, again, just to refresh everybody's memory, after the development of Shul Creek and the middle school and some of the things that were going on up there, we identified that there are a number of discrepancies between the official zoning map and the actual zoning ordinances that were passed over time. You had adopted a comprehensive map like what you're going to propose to potentially do tonight. That comprehensive zoning map had mistakes in it for whatever reasons. Things were not correct, but it is the adopted map and it wipes out anything prior to it. And so we went through systematically after, as we stated, when we adopted and developed Shul Creek, that we had worked through that one and its zoning. Then we would go to the school district and clarify their zoning, which ultimately we did by getting the special use permit and retaining it as R one. And then we went back through it and cleaned everything else up. Ed went through and went back and went through every single zoning ordinance and change, all the way back to nineteen ninety-nine, when there was the previous, previous comprehensive map. And walked through and ensured that the zoning map was correct in regards to all of the things that were done there and then our intentions for moving forward. And so he made the adjustments and changes therein. They were reviewed internally and then by planning and zoning. The only thing that they were concerned about that withheld them from making a recommendation on adopting the map was the discussion of whether the middle school should be zoned as R one or zoned as R two in looking at the future land use development map and the identification of high density residential on the north side of Waverly. And so ultimately, we said we would come to this body and talk about it. The feeling we took back from the council is at this time, we don't see the need to change it at this point as we develop land further in the future to the north side, it can make a difference. Also with the way that that development is designed on the northern side, the highest density is actually further to the west. As you get to the highway frontage, it's not actually building off of the southern property, which is the middle school. It does conform to the usages, because it's a civic use and it's designed for civic use. So we took that information back, we also contacted the school district to ask them, here were some of the issues that were brought up about the middle school zoning and adoption of the map. And at the time, there was, they didn't have any interest in changing, they wanted to stay with R one. They felt like that was the appropriate move that they wanted to do. And that's why they filed for the special use permit, so that was their feedback. We took all that back to planning and zoning and planning and zoning then looked at it and said, okay, we're ready to adopt the map. And made the recommendation of adoption of the map as drafted. And so that's what's before you here tonight for your final recommendation and then ultimately a vote.
Any questions or comments on item number twelve? What's the one like to introduce the ordinance?
All in news.
What's that?
All in news ordinance.
In order to amend the official zoning map of the city of Stewart, Stewart County, Nebraska, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirteen. And the title is hereby approved, any motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So.
Second.
A motion and a second is being further discussion. Seeing none, to register your votes, please sway the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirteen. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So.
A motion and a second is being further discussion. Seeing none, again, the question is your ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirteen be finally passed and adopted. If you'd register your vote, please sway the votes. This is the last ordinance for this evening, anyone final motion to make all the ordinances a part of the permanent record?
Second.
A motion and a second, if you'd register your vote, please sway the votes. Item thirteen, consideration of an agreement with Schimmer Associates Incorporated Professional Geotechnical Engineering Services for Exploration and Analysis of Soils for East Stewart Street Improvements. Welcome.
Good evening. This agreement is for geotechnical work that we do as due diligence for basically any reconstruction project that we do for paving, to make sure we don't build on soils that aren't any good as we're investing hundreds of thousands of dollars. So there's always money's well, money well spent upfront to make sure that we're doing it right. So Schimmer did a very, very professional and good job on the Waverly Road geotechnical investigation. So I like what I saw, so I used them as to get a console for this work for East Stewart. We did have open house for East Stewart from forty-seven, we got about fifteen, maybe seventeen people to come through and ask about the project, make comments, a lot of, a lot of positive feedback. So I think we're in good shape to move forward with final plans and get this thing out for bids late August, early September.
Any questions or comments for Jake? Will I be doing anything in motion?
So.
Leave a motion and a second, is being further discussion. Seeing none, to register your votes, please sway the votes. Item fourteen, consideration of an agreement with Spark Data Solutions Incorporated for electronic meeting service for publishing city council and board meeting agendas and activities. Greg.
Yeah, just looking to try out a new publishing system for our agenda management for boards and committees. We've used, I would fail at saying this, so Bonnie Granciaus?
Grantus.
Great, yeah. For the past few years and kind of surveyed around with you guys to see if there's anything specific about the way that we put out the agenda now or the system that's on. We did contact a number of other communities, including the, the school district uses the Spark data system. And a number of other municipalities are moving to it. Gives us a lot of flexibility in regards to how we put up that system, how we can train and make it available for others. That's one of the hardest things we have is trying to get anyone else to be able to put the agenda together and put it up under the current system. And so by having the new system that's as flexible as we are, we'll try to migrate more of the boards, planning, zoning. and some of the other ones to, to utilize this. And so we just felt like, based on the demo that Bonnie had done and what she had heard from other communities, that this is something we'd like to try out, and if we don't like it, it's only for a year, we can go back to the old system and try something else out, so. But we felt like this is the appropriate move and something we wanted to try.
It's the same cost as our current system and we could put up to ten boards and committees on this using it. So Planning Commission could use it, it can be published out there, it would look kind of like what you see, it'd be all electronic. So we have a little more flexibility as well, so.
Believe it also has other capabilities that, this one has like the lead along, I don't know if they call that. But we could in the future have a laptop or something still set up where you guys log in and then you would basically follow along with stuff we're showing you on the main laptop. Stuff I was demonstrating saying, oh, now look at page thirty-five, I would just go to it and you would automatically see it. And then that's just optional, you can log in or out of that system. But when you're looking at really technical things or things with, you know, design pages, we have a hundred pages, it's easier for us to just flip to it and show it to you. We're continuing to discuss technology, it's always a thing that's on our mind as we finish up budgeting, things like that, to improve the way that we put on presentations, provide new information and do things like that. But this is something we want to try out.
Any questions or comments on item fourteen? So we, what we're using now, is that in a larger agreement? Or is that something that we're essentially getting out of for a year and going into this one?
Getting out of.
Any other questions or comments? Or we entertain a motion?
Move to approve the agreement with Spark Data Solution.
Leave a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Leave a motion and a second and for discussion. Seeing none, the rest of your votes, please play the votes. Item fifteen, acknowledge receipt of claim from Jacob Kemp, Jacob Kemp, four four one Grand Avenue, Seward, for personal property damage and forwarded to the city's insurance carrier. Greg.
Yes, had a branch, it wasn't broken at the time that it was identified, but it was hanging down. And so we planned to take care of it the next day. A neighbor that lived approximately adjacent to this tree on Fifth Street parked underneath it and during the storm that night, it broke. And so then it landed on their vehicle, but it didn't separate fully from the tree. And so they couldn't move their vehicle and pull it off. The street department came that next morning when it was reported and they lifted it up so the person can move their vehicle out from underneath it, and then they would cut it off the tree. When they lifted it up about this far, it broke off the tree. And so we questioned the, inquired with the street department members that were involved. And they said, the initial impact from the tree going down in the first place, to their eyes, caused.